I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You did that out of curiosity.
Yeah, nice. We're going to start the meeting with a moment of silence, please. Roll call Andrea.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
And Counselor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
We have all members present, we have a quorum.
It's nice to be back in here, it really is, it feels like we're in again. Thank goodness for Zoom, you know, we're very lucky that we were able to do it, thank you Andrea, you did an amazing job with that. But it is nothing better than just a good room where we can discuss without interference, or I can't see you, or what did you say? So, thank you so much for allowing all of that to happen, and I'm glad we're back in chambers, and we got the okay to, we got a big enough room that we can divide this chamber up into two different groups, and that was okay by our health directors from Wood County, so, glad. Counsel, you have had time to go over the prior meeting's minutes.
And make a motion to approve the minutes as per, Mayor. Sorry.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counselor Stickley, executed by Counselor Jeff Stieritz. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We have no one coming up to address counsel at this time, no one called in, so we are going to move forward with our committee reports, and we have a park board committee report.
And that's mine. So, at the meeting, Tim Dennis came to the meeting of the park board, asked the park board to approve a sign, which is this sign here. To be put on the Goodwin Preserve, you know, the south side of the preserve but the north side of the pond. And, so there was some questions by John, the question of his was, they want to put the rotary wheel on the sign also. Tim's response to that was, the rotary is going to pay for the sign, have it put up, and they're going to pay to have the preserve and all the trails put in, so that's why the rotary would like to put their rotary sign on the main sign, which no one seemed to have a problem with that. The other question was that Todd Hanson wasn't going to do it, Larry brought that up. Tim said that Todd's signs are a little expensive, this other sign is going to look similar to the other signs in the city, but a little bit more reasonable price to the rotary. I brought up that if it's going to be promoting the trails, then it should say the preserve and trails, to let everybody know there is trails there to walk, because if you just put Goodwin Preserve, everybody's going to go, that's cool, but nobody will go walk the trails. So anyhow, it's a seven foot wide, two foot high, the lettering on the top is going to be seven inches, the bottom lettering is going to be four and a half inches, and that's the sign that the rotary is going to put up. It was approved by the park board, and now it's up to Rock City Council for approval. And that's the sign. Keith Torbitt announced to the park board, the finance committee's report on charging for fields at Biddle Park, that was already approved by council, he just wanted them to come up to speed on that, as to the money. Keith also brought up to the park board that they need to start working in the future for the parks, where they might want to place trees. There's a lot of trees that people want to place, such as Perry Place Trees on the park, for a memorial tree, and the park board is going to work on that in different locations, not necessarily at First Base or Home Plate, but somewhere in the parks where trees could be placed in the future, so if someone comes and wants a memorial tree, there'll already be a location that trees could be placed, and with a tree commission, types of trees that could be replaced there. So, with that, that was about the only, summary of the park board. The only thing I needed, what we need now is a motion for the sign, I think.
Does anybody have any questions about the report? I'm just saying with the memorial trees, it's a good thing John's on the park board from Public Works, because he knows where all the lines and everything are.
Correct.
To help the park board make decisions, that's what would be good place, so that's a plus.
And there was a timely manner situation, not emergency, but just start working on it to know where they could be placed, so when the time comes, it would be a quicker response.
Right, I like that idea. Okay, so...
Any other questions about the sign, anybody?
I'm just glad you put the path of the trails, that was a good idea.
Right.
Yeah, I thought that, because if people on a walking path, you know, will be able to look across the pond, and see that there's a Goodwin Preserve and trails, so they may come from the walking trail, and come across through Rotary Park, and walk the paths through Goodwin, so. Any other questions for us, you'd like to answer?
No, I guess we just need a move on the sign.
If I would make the motion to approve the sign for the rotary to be put up at the Goodwin Preserve.
Motion to approve the park board recommendation to approve the Goodwin Preserve and Trail sign, to be placed Rotary Park, moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Schneider. Is there any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
And we thank Rotary for donating that sign to the trails, it's very nice.
I will pass that along.
Tree commission.
Okay, so on Wednesday, we had a tree commission meeting, and one of the big topics was whether the Tree City USA would be held in Waseon this coming year, or if they would push everything back, because Bowling Green was canceled this year. I did find out since then, which is not in the notes, but it is on schedule for next year, so that's something that we'll have to talk about.
Waseon's is?
Yes.
Oh, Bowling Green just...
Waseon's, I don't know what happens to Bowling Green, but...
They just go back into the rotation?
Yes, that's my assumption. So, we will have to plan for that for next year. The other, couple other things that were going on is, they've been, you know, trimming trees, planting trees, and there were some pavers for Kimball's and Walt Lang, and those have been done, a tree was planted and a paver was put in for them, there is a picture here, if everybody wants to look at this. And then, the other, I think the important one that was discussed was the, the tree commission suggested upping the amount for the memorial trees, and I believe it's currently at 180, that's not in here, and I don't have one of those pamphlets, and again, there's a, I see something that we'll have to try to figure out, because it has 350 in our agenda and 360 on our official notes. So, but the, the reason that they want to, or that we want to go up with that is because what has happened, and they had several examples of trees are actually dying, and so they're actually replacing them, so that is being replaced at our cost. So, we feel that if you, if we increase the original amount, that that will cover, you know, service, taking care of the tree in the future, and if one does happen to die, they can replace it, you know, without additional cost to the city. There was a lot of discussion if it was too high, but people felt that if, you know, when you do a memorial, that's something that's kind of important, and they're seeing it in a lot of the actual funeral homes, and it says, hey, if you want to do the tree, so people thought that it's a fair number, and John thought that it would be fair for the city, and again, with the upkeep, and so, that was discussed, discussed, we made a motion, and now that's brought up to the council.
And the cost has gone up, I mean, it just does.
Yeah.
Especially with our trees, so, it's a good idea. Any questions?
Is that 350 going to, like, a general fund, or do we have a tree fund that goes into for future purchases?
Line item, it's line item. It goes into that, a line item, does it not?
Yeah, but it's in the general fund.
Is it?
Yeah.
But it's line item for trees?
Yeah.
So, is it 350 or 360, which one do you want?
360.
Would I make a motion? For 360 bucks.
That's an easy one. Sheerly was only 10 bucks. Love them bucks, sweetheart.
I second Jeff's motion.
Motion to accept the tree committee recommendation to increase the cost of memorial trees to $360, moved by Counselor Jeff Stieritz and seconded by Counsel President Chamberlain. Is there any discussion? Counselor Jeff Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Patrick, did you take these minutes?
No.
Whoever did, that's amazing writing. I've not seen this.
That is a...
Peacock.
Peacock, yes.
Okay, very nice. Okay, let's move on to department head reports, we're going to start with Fire Chief Exeter.
Okay, not too much to fire department right now, call volumes kicking back up to sort of normal levels of, now people are out and about, traveling again, crashes have been way up, and we will be doing, discussing EMS contracts with the commissioners this week, with a special workshop tomorrow, so, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, and with that, counsel, I've asked Pat to join those meetings, so that he can kind of give you some insight of what's happening at these discussions, so, just end of the...
I was in on that too.
Hmm?
Pat and I were both in on that meeting.
Were you?
Yeah.
I mean, it's open sessions, so if you would like to go in, I just...
Tomorrow night, 4:30?
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Anything, any questions for Rick? Okay, Chief Dennis off today, and so we have Assistant Chief Ruth way in the back.
Well, the first thing on our list is that we're going to be moving money from our insurance fund, in our account, so that we can not take money out of the capital fund to outfit our newest patrol car that we're going to get. We will also, we're also taking applications for part-time officers and part-time dispatchers, so we can get those hired. And then, the last thing that I have is Safety City is July 6th through the 10th, and July 13th through the 17th, and the deadline for applications is July 3rd, you can get applications on Facebook, at the library, our office, I think they have it at the water department too, and we are still accepting donations for Safety City.
Okay. And that goes through you, to accept the donations?
Yes.
Drop them off.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for Assistant Chief?
I do real quick, Mayor, have they nailed down a venue for Safety City yet?
No, they're still looking for a venue right now.
Have they cut the classes?
No, I think the classes are still going to be the same, they're just trying to find the location to have it.
Outside, inside?
Probably outside, I would guess, for the most part, but we haven't, they haven't given us all the details just yet.
We're looking at one of the shelter houses that we're parked, probably Shawnee or them.
So we're going to have a lot of big wheels going around the park?
Uh, we're working on that, that part.
All right. Okay, Keith, you're up.
Just a few quick things, the ODOT grant that I asked for permission to apply for, we did get it finished, with the help of DGL, I got that turned in today, and we will be going either virtually, or have to go down to Columbus and do a presentation on it for the first round in July, as soon as I know that date, I've got it set up with DGL to assist me in that as well. Also, we've started mosquito spraying for our terredactyl mosquitoes that have been taking small children away, and the last couple of weeks, they've got really bad, so we started spraying, we're spraying twice a week, and that's the maximum that we're allowed per EPA, so, we are doing, getting that taken care of. If you notice, the water line is done, landscaping is done, they will come back in the fall to do a second reseeding, because obviously summer's not the best time to seed for grass, but other than that, they're 99% done on that project, and I think that's all I've got, unless someone asks questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jamie, shout, please.
Well, I don't really have anything to report tonight, so, I can say that nice and loud.
Yes, yes, okay. Any questions for Jamie at all? And Tom.
So, just one thing, that is to clarify this need for a motion towards the latter part of the agenda under new business, to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control, indicating that the city does not object to the sale of liquor on a patio that's being expanded out of Warrior Wings location. Keith can talk, could address a lot more of the logistical issues that have been involved with that, but the long story short is, they're applying for a temporary permit, because permit, permits are not being issued for an expansion like that, and unlike normal circumstances where counsel is presented with the application, can just say nothing, and there would be no objections lodged, in this case, for the application, the Department of Commerce actually is asking them for something affirmative from the city, just indicating that it doesn't object to the sale of alcohol out on that expanded portion. So, if counsel is, decides to approve that motion, that letter, Keith has drafted a letter for Kathy to sign, that would go to the Department of Commerce, simply just indicating that there's no objection at this time to the sale of the liquor out on that expanded area.
Okay.
So that'll come up in new business, but I just wanted to give you all a heads up on that.
So then, we're going to have to reapproach this when it becomes not a temporary license, and they have to file for a permanent?
I believe that's correct, I defer to Keith on that, but...
More likely, Mayor, yes, it's...
And it'll be the old way of non-action.
And because of COVID-19, where everybody and their brother is looking to expand seating wherever possible, that's the reason they're not doing any permanent expansion with this stuff.
Okay, any questions? Great. Alrighty, so, let's move on then to legislation, there's a lot of legislation here. Resolution 2020-7 is a resolution requesting the city of Waseon share of funds from the county coronavirus relief distribution fund, and affirming that upon receipt thereof, such funds shall be used only to cover costs incurred by the city of Waseon, consistent with the requirements of applicable law and regulations, and this needs to be declared an emergency so that we can get this turned in and get refunded.
I'll make a motion to declare emergency, on second resolution 2020-17.
Motion to...
He already seconded it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I didn't even hear you.
Motion to place resolution 2020-7 on emergency, reading moved by Counselor Jeff Stieritz, and seconded by Counselor Griggs. Is there any discussion? Counselor Jeff Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final. Second.
Motion to place resolution 2020-7 on final, reading moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counsel President Chamberlain. Is there any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Resolution 2020-8, a resolution declaring it necessary to levy an additional 2.0 mil tax levy for the purpose of parks and recreation purposes, and requesting the Fulton County auditor to certify the total current tax value of the city and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the additional levy and declare an emergency. This is our pool levy, which is less, it's just, it's going to be a...
I would make that motion, Mayor.
I would second the emergency.
Motion to place resolution 2020-8 on emergency, reading moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counsel President Chamberlain. Is there any discussion?
I think...
I have a question.
Yes.
It indicates additional, this is a renewal.
It's a renewal, that's what, I just stated that, it's a renewal. I was looking, I was just rereading it to see...
It's actually lower, isn't it?
It is lower, yes, it's lower, it was 2.6, and now it's 2, it's going to be a renewal at a lower rate to the taxpayers.
Well, should that be called, I mean, is that not called a replacement, then, or is it?
It's a renewal.
Renewal, okay.
So, we're looking to renew the levy at a reduced rate.
Correct, right. You got that down there, this?
Yes.
We'll fix it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second.
Motion to place resolution 2020-8 on final reading moved by Counselor Jeff Stieritz and seconded by Counselor Schneider. Is there any discussion? Counselor Jeff Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 2020-6, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of $245,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, for the purpose of improving the municipal water work system by acquiring, acquiring, constructing and installing a water line, and also municipal water treatment plant by constructing an additional treatment building and lagoon, acquiring additional treatment tanks and high-service pump and additional piping, and making other necessary improvements, and declaring an emergency. How many times can I say additional?
Could you repeat that?
[laughing].
I would make that motion. I'll second.
Motion to place ordinance 2020-6 on emergency, reading moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Scott Stieritz. Is there any discussion?
Jamie, this is just a continuance of paying down a debt, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Is there any further discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Stieritz?
Yes.
And Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We have nothing under second reading, so we'll move on to third reading. Oh! Well, let's go.
Final passage. Second.
Motion to place ordinance 2020-6 on final reading moved by Counselor Jeff Stieritz and seconded by Counselor Schneider. Is there any discussion? Counselor Jeff Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
And Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
You know, I got to do that once, when we have these emergencies, I always got to miss one.
You just want to see it for a weekend after.
Yeah, you were, everybody, hey, hey!
I don't know how it stayed out the first year you were at the council, too, later.
Huh?
That was a long time, not the first year you was on the council.
Yeah, it was, it's getting there, we're getting low, we're getting down there.
I don't know how it gentle Tom nudges you normally, so I just, I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure.
Don't throw anything. Again, we have nothing under second reading, so we're going to move on to third reading. Ordinance 2020-5, ordinance amended codified, ordinance chapter 1117, establishment of district maps, amending the official zoning code.
Third reading.
Second.
Motion to place ordinance 2020-5 on final reading moved by Counsel President Chamberlain and seconded by Counselor Jeff Stieritz. So, you Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Is there any discussion? Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
And Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Under new business, I will need a motion to reappoint James Barber to the Charter Revision Commission for the term of July 1st, 2020, to June 30th, 2023. He has agreed to do this one.
It would be my pleasure to appoint James Barber to that, Mayor.
I'll second it.
Motion to reappoint James Barber to the Charter Revision Commission for the term of July 1st, 2020, to June 30th, 2023, moved by Counselor Stickley and Counselor Griggs. Is there any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Okay, I need a motion to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control, indicating that the city does not object to the sale of liquor on an outdoor expanded patio area at the Warrior Wings location, at the corner of North Shoop and Lynnwood Street.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Motion to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control, indicating that the city does not object to the sale of liquor on an outdoor expanded patio area at the Warrior Wings location, at the corner of North Shoop and Lynnwood Street, moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Schneider. Is there any discussion?
It's hard to say Warrior Wings.
Their bird dogs are in the past. Paid advertisement by way of Scott Stieritz.
I like their photos, it's good.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Stieritz?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
And for the police department, we need a motion to authorize the director of finance to appropriate $18,000 within the drug law enforcement fund accounted entitled Drug Enforcement. And you see that great big number? To equip two new patrol vehicles.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion to authorize the director of finance to appropriate $18,000 within the drug law enforcement fund, to equip two new patrol vehicles, moved by Counselor Griggs and seconded by Counselor Stickley. Is there any discussion?
Assistant Chief, Assistant Chief?
He's talking.
Hey, John?
Sir.
Hey, do you know what officers are going to get the rankles, do we know that yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
We have not decided how we're going to sort that out.
It's called a hat, and... It's called a hat, and...
Well, if someone want to do it by seniority, and someone that just want to, because we'd have to reshuffle all the cars if they did it by seniority, so.
Right, right.
Well, that'll be up to the chief when he gets that, all right.
That's why he's on vacation.
Yeah.
I have one more thing to add on...
I don't want to go to that, I just...
Oh, okay, sorry. Sorry.
All right, Counsel Griggs?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Scott Stewart?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
And Counsel Jeff Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Good job. Okay, now, one more thing I brought up is, when we had a zoning inspector for the City of Waseon, the one thing that we used to get at our city council meetings was a report of new permits, how many permits, and things like that, whereas now that we go through